The Rotary Club of Columbus is a membership organization with a passion for service. Founded in 1915, we're one of Rotary's largest and oldest clubs in the whole country. My name is Tyler Townsen, and I have the privilege of serving as the 2019-2020 Club member. We all know the challenges the coronavirus pandemic is posing. Our club has faced tough times, including two world wars, but this is the first time we've had to suspend our in-person meetings. So instead of meeting here at the Trade Center, we're going to meet every week online until it's appropriate. So whether you're a member or a guest, thank you for joining us today. We're happy to hear from you.
...of the Rotary Club of Columbus. Thank you for keeping Rotary on your calendar. We're happy that you're here with us, whether you're joining by Facebook, or YouTube, or even calling in on our club conference line. We're happy that you're here. Last night, several of our fellow Rotarians carried on the important tradition of the Page One Awards, and I just want to recognize them for the great work that they did. Ross McDuffie did a great job hosting the event. Scott Hill, Chris Markwood, and Norm Easterbrook represented their organizations as sponsors and presenters. Marquette McKnight and her company did a great job producing the event. And a special congratulations to our own Shekha Shaw, whose son, Manav, won the award for mathematics. So thank you for all being leaders at this time. For those of you on Facebook Live, I want to remind you to comment to your friends. You can use that as a chat. Please ask questions of our speaker, and we'll get to as many of those as we can. At this time, our Rotary News correspondent, Cameron Bean, is away in the field and unable to join us. So you'll have to rely on your Facebook friends and others to give you that dose of humor for the day. Our club has a proud tradition of honoring a special military guest from Fort Benning. And some weeks, as we have seen, we don't have an active-duty soldier, which gives us a great opportunity to recognize one of our own. And so this week, Joe Young will bring us our Soldier of the Week.
Thank you, President Tyler. Good afternoon, fellow Rotarians and guests that are joining us via web conference or conference call. My name is Joe Young, and I'm the president-elect of the Rotary Club of Columbus. Professionally, I help guide clients toward financial freedom and enduring legacies in my role as an investment advisor and financial planner with Sanova Securities. The Rotary Club of Columbus is proud to have numerous military veterans in our membership. Over the past several weeks, we've highlighted a few of our Army veterans, and today, we wanted to show some love to the Marines. It's my great pleasure and honor to highlight some of the life and accomplishments of Marine veteran John Stacy. John was born in Coleman, Kentucky, and joined the U.S. Marine Corps in 1965. Following boot camp, he served in numerous capacities, to include motor pool transport, where he served as a Colonel's personal driver. He later went on to serve as a career planner and a member of the hostage negotiation team. He eventually served as a professor of the Advanced Officer Course for the Military Police. John has served overseas tours in Vietnam, Okinawa, and the Philippines. In 1984, John was recognized as the Marine Corps Outstanding Citizen of the Year for the State of Georgia. John retired from the Marines as a gunnery sergeant in 1985, following 20 years of active-duty military service. John's public service did not end with his military retirement. He has served in leadership positions with the Boy Scouts of America, and later as Executive Director for the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. John served as a regional representative for Senator Paul Coverdale, and later served on the staffs of Senators Del Miller and Congressman Lynn Westmoreland. Today, John continues to serve as a political consultant, and is a great advocate for Columbus and the State of Georgia. John would be the first to say that his success would not have been possible without the love and support of his wife Elaine, to whom he has been married for over 50 years. John, we thank you for your service to our country, to our community, and to our club. We're proud to have you among us.
Thank you, Joe. And John, I also want to add my gratitude and thank you for your service to the country and your contributions to our club. This week, we'll continue our series of recognizing our own Rotary leaders. So these are Rotarians who serve as CEOs, presidents, and directors of organizations who are making an impact today. And today, we will hear from Frank Shepherd, President and CEO of Feeding the Valley.
Thank you, President Tyler, and fellow Rotarians. My name is Frank Shepherd. I'm President and CEO of Feeding the Valley Food Bank. I'm a new Rotarian having joined this year. Our organization provides food assistance to individuals in West Georgia, East Alabama, and Southwest Georgia. The need has spiked tremendously during this crisis. Children out of school do not have breakfast and lunch. Parents who are laid off or out of work are feeling the financial effects of this crisis and having difficulty feeding their families. That's where we come in. Since March 15th, Feeding the Valley has fed an additional 6,000 families through our commodities distribution program known as Mobile Pantry. Each family gets 60 pounds of food, to include frozen meats and fresh produce, to be able to feed their families and make ends meet. We will continue these additional distributions until this crisis ends. This week, we will feed Muskogee County School District children, who are on their recognized spring break, when school cannot provide any food supplements. Altogether, Feeding the Valley distributes over 1 million pounds of food and prepare meals each month to our neighbors in need. We are here to help the citizens of the Chattahoochee Valley make it through these difficult times, and thank our volunteers for helping us change lives, one meal at a time. Thank you, President Tyler. Now, back to you.
Frank, thank you for continuing to support our community. Please pass along the gratitude of our club to your staff for their work as well. Rotary Youth Leadership Awards, also known as RILA, have been an important program, supported by our club for a number of years. And we were disappointed, of course, that that program had to be postponed or canceled for this year. But instead, our fellow Rotarian Jason Cooper, who manages this program on behalf of our club, will give us an update and remind us of all the good things that they do. Jason?
Thank you, President Tyler. Hello, fellow Rotarians. I am Jason Cooper. I'm an environment engineer with Geotechnical Environmental Consultants here in town, and wanted to talk to you today just about one of our programs that I'm involved with. When the late Tony Wright was speaking to me about Rotary, and once, you know, he introduced me to the club, he told me a couple of important facts. And one of those was that just by being a member in itself of our Rotary Club of Columbus was very beneficial for every member. But he also explained that being active within the club and being part of the fabric that's doing the work in the community and working within the programs is exponentially more beneficial for each member that is involved with. With that, I've been lucky enough to get involved and honored. I am finishing up my tenure as a board member. Got a couple of months left on that. And then, the other program that I wanted to talk to you about that I'm heavily involved with is our Rotary Youth Leadership Award Program, or RILA, as we like to call it. RILA is a three- or four-day retreat down in America's Georgia, where our district, and it's district-wide, so that's where we send all of our students. And it is for rising juniors, so students that are finishing their 10th and then starting their 11th grade year the following fall. They've got a great working relationship with each of the schools, the Muskogee County School District, and also the private schools. And our goal every year is to send one rising junior from each school in the county to RILA. And it's really a, to introduce these students who may not have had any introduction to other leaders in the community, inspirational speakers. They do some personality identification, like, you know, what is your strengths and weaknesses? It certainly builds on communication and problem-solving skills. And it teaches the students how to turn idea and motivation into actions by motivating other people to do good work. So the transformation for when they come back, that, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever it is, and they're hugging, and they're, you know, doing projects, you know, looking to do projects together in school. So it's really an amazing program. You know, after the camp's over and before they go back to school, we try to invite the students and their parents to join us for a lunch. Hopefully, you've had the pleasure of hearing some of them talk about their experience at RILA. And I do want to also mention that it is open for our members. If you have a child, or a grandchild, or niece or nephew, and you'd like to send them to this camp, please let us know. I appreciate your time today, and I hope everybody stays safe, and look forward to seeing y'all soon. Thank you.
Jason, thank you for your support of this program in organizing it for the benefit of these students. Before we introduce our program, I just have a few quick announcements. Our online Happy Hour mixes have been great. They've been well-attended. If you haven't attended yet, I hope that you'll do so. You'll receive an email link, and then drop by tomorrow, anytime between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. And then, our weekly poker games have been fun as well. So these are friendly games. There's no cost to play, and no money changes hands. It's just for fun. And we have a Zoom video conference set up, so that we can talk to each other. And then, we have a poker game set up, so we have something to talk about. So these have started going each Monday evening at 8:30. So you'll receive a link for that as well, and contact the office for any help getting signed up. And then, lastly, your board meeting had its regular, your board had its regular meeting yesterday, and we talked about ideas of fun things that people may enjoy. And there were two suggestions that I want you to think about. One is a Rotary movie night, where we could potentially watch a movie together, discuss it. And the second is a Rotary Book Club, where we could read a book and then discuss it through a video conference. So if you're interested in that, please let the office know. And now, at this time, Pastor President Michael Silverstein will introduce our program.
Good afternoon, President Tyler and fellow Rotarians. I'm personally honored that I was asked to introduce our fellow Rotarian and my friend Rabbi Beth Schwartz as today's guest speaker. Beth received her ordination from Hebrew Union College in Cincinnati, Ohio in 1999. She's been the spiritual leader at Temple Israel since assuming the pulpit in 2012, and prior to Temple Israel, was the rabbi for 13 years at Temple Bell in Knoxville, Tennessee. Before entering the rabbinate, Beth was an information technology analyst. Beth holds multiple degrees, a Bachelor of Arts degree in history from the State University of New York, a Master of Education in Guidance and Counseling from George Mason University, and a Master of Hebrew Letters degree from Hebrew Union College. Beth has been a member of our Rotary Club for over seven years, and is going to be an incoming board member in July. She's a Paul Harris Fellow, a Paul Harris Sustainer, and a Will Watt Sustainer. Beth truly exemplifies service above self. She has a remarkable history and a lifelong commitment to social and humanitarian causes. She's very active in a number of interfaith activities in our Biscity community, and was a major catalyst in the formation of our Inhuman Trafficking Now Committee. On April 8, 2015, following a powerful presentation by Dave McClary from the Roswell Rotary Club on Inhuman Trafficking Now, and Rotary's role in this humanitarian crisis, Beth and several other individuals immediately approached me as the president-elect. The message was clear, that our club needed to be involved in this monumental effort. Beth, along with several other individuals, were the catalyst of what has become a very significant and active Rotary committee, a committee that has morphed into a community-wide coalition, and which has been very successful in creating awareness of inhuman trafficking within the Chattahoochee Valley. Beth currently serves as the co-chair of the Inhuman Trafficking Now Committee, along with Tom Titus. Yesterday was Holocaust Remembrance Day, a very solemn day of remembrance for Jewish people throughout the world, also known as Yom HaShoach. The word, Hebrew word, shoach literally means whirlwind. And it was a horrific whirlwind that swept through Europe in the '30s and '40s, and the loss of 6 million Jewish men, women, children in the Holocaust. It is the responsibility of the Jewish people on Holocaust Remembrance Day to memorialize the 6 million that were lost during the Holocaust, as well as to honor the survivors and their rescuers, and to make sure that the world never forgets what happened. It is so fitting that Beth is here to share her thoughts and insights on Holocaust Remembrance Day, given that she is a longtime student of Jewish history, antisemitism, and the Holocaust. It is now my pleasure to call on Rabbi Beth Schwartz for today's presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael, for that lovely introduction. And I want to just add that the impetus for the Inhuman Trafficking Now Committee actually included Michael very prominently. And so I thank you, and I'm proud to call you my friend. So if Yom HaShoach is a Jewish observance, why are we talking about it in the wider community? After all, January 27th is known as International Holocaust Remembrance Day, commemorating the liberation of Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration camp in 1945. Well, Yom HaShoach was instituted by the Knesset, the Israeli parliament, in 1951, in large part to counter the notion that these 6 million Jews had gone to their deaths without protest, that they had been like sheep. And we now know, and have learned in the decades since, that resistance takes many forms. And so Holocaust Remembrance, Yom HaShoach, is also intended to highlight the bravery, the stoicism, the courage of all of those who were victims of the Holocaust. And it has become an observance worldwide, not just in Jewish communities, but in many other countries as well, including our own. And it is time, at this point in the spring, to remember the Warsaw Ghetto uprising, which began at the beginning of Passover in 1943 in Warsaw. Holocaust Remembrance Day actually falls one week after the end of Passover, and one week before Israel's Memorial Day and Independence Day. So why are we talking about it today, in particular, more widely? We know, through experience of other peoples who have suffered genocide, crimes against humanity, war crimes, ethnic cleansing, that silence is hatred's best friend. Silence enables all of the vitriolic language, all of the propaganda, to flourish. And particularly today, when we are seeing in the time of this plague of COVID, a rise of anti-Asian prejudice, we must remember that prejudice is about the people who are haters. They are not about the objects of that prejudice. So it's very important to keep alive the memory of this most horrific event, in order to maintain an example, not only of resistance and heroism, but what such supposedly individual opinion, or things that are presented as not serious, but really are serious, what that can lead to. And that's not to say that we are in danger here today. However, the language that is being used, not only blaming Asians, but also using antisemitic language to blame Jews for the COVID-19 pandemic, is very much like the language that was used in Germany in the 1920s and 1930s to promote antisemitism, to set stage for genocide. We talk about the 6 million. Where does that number come from? Well, it turns out that it is not just an estimate, because many of the slaughtered were killed without taking down their names, without recognizing, but just hauled off to fields and pits and ghettos. But based on the populations, the assumed populations of countries of Europe by 1939, pre-war, and estimating from the records that the Germans did keep, we come up with the number of 6 million. And actually, the number 6 million, while it is an estimate, is not a rough estimate, but one that is based on not just post-war assumptions, but even during the war. We know that as early as 1944, Adolf Eichmann himself referred to having killed 6 million Jews in Europe by the Nazi regime. So it has become a sacred number, but it also is part of a larger, a much larger universe of victims in the Holocaust. So I'm going to share with you some slides from the United States Holocaust Museum and Memorial. And if you want to know more, the U.S. Holocaust Museum website is very, very well-supplied with information and links, and we will see. So I want to give credit where credit is due. The Holocaust Memorial Museum is a repository of many artifacts and records, and much of their material is available online. So I just want to, I'm having a little trouble moving the slides. There we go. So we call these National Days of Remembrance. Between 1933 and 1945, the German government, led by Adolf Hitler and the Nazi Party, carried out the systematic persecution and murder of Jews. And this is known as genocide. The term genocide was coined by Raphael Lemkin, who was a refugee from the Holocaust. He was from the city of Lviv, which has been, at different times in history, Polish or Ukrainian. And he coined the term genocide. Genocide is the state-sponsored systematic persecution and murder of a specific group. And that group can be defined ethnically, racially, nationally, or religiously. And it is the systematic approach, the state sponsorship of murder, that is what distinguishes genocide from other crimes against humanity, such as ethnic cleansing. And this definition was adopted in 1948 by the fledgling United Nations. They also persecuted and killed millions of other people. And here, it's very difficult to put a point on a particular number. Some say as 5 million people who were considered racially, socially unfit, politically unfit. Numbers go as high as 20 million, who died as a direct result of the Nazi totalitarian regime. This, for example, is a chart of how to tell if someone is a pure German, an Aryan, or part Jewish. And these are the kinds of charts that the Nazis produced, to help people understand what it was to be other. And these were defined by the Nuremberg Laws, which were published after Hitler came to power, which gradually stripped all Jews in Germany of their jobs, their education, their personal rights, their place in society, and their place in the economy. Concentration camps were established first for political prisoners, and all prisoners were required to wear badges. And these badges identified them as to why they were there: yellow star for Jews, pink triangles for homosexuals, also those who were Roma or Gypsy, Jehovah's Witnesses, many, many different groups. And they had a badge to identify sort of who was lower than whom. This is a picture of Warsaw, as the Nazis conquered it in 1939. And by 1945, the Nazis had destroyed all of Warsaw proper, and nothing that you see in Warsaw today, almost nothing, is preserved from before World War II. But I showed this slide also to show that much of the European cities, many of the European cities, this is what they looked like in 1945, at the end of the war. And it should be noted that persecution and murder of Jews, while it took place beginning in 1940, 1941, that the deportations of Jews from various countries that the Nazis had conquered went on, despite battles, despite military campaigns. The last train that took Jews, deported Jews from Berlin, left Berlin in March of 1945. And this is what Europe looked like, much of Europe after the war. Jews were herded into ghettos in the beginning, to segregate them from their non-Jewish neighbors. Their daily food rations were maybe a fourth of the calories needed to sustain a healthy life, and were reduced from, say, 900 calories a day, down to as low as 400 calories a day, was what the Nazis provided, so that they would starve. You may have seen this picture before. About 25% of Jews who perished in the Holocaust were shot by mobile killing squads, who marched them to pits, whether others dug the pits, or the Jews were made to dig the pits themselves. There were also killing sites in forests in Poland, in Lithuania, in Latvia, in Ukraine, where the Jews were made to dig pits, and then were shot and killed in their pits. So you might say that the genocide of the Jews began with ethnic cleansing, but it did not stop there. And many of them were deported to concentration camps in boxcars like this one. It's hard to see from this one how high up off the ground that car was. And hundreds of people were crammed into boxcars. And they were on special rail lines, often, and rail lines were built right into the concentration camps, so that the Jews were pulled out or forced out of their, out of these boxcars, after riding for hours and hours, maybe even days, without food or water, and despite the weather. But these, this boxcar is at the Holocaust Museum. There is one that stands in the middle of the Birkenau concentration camp as well, and many others, if you are aware of the program many years ago in Tennessee, Paper Clips. They were able to acquire a boxcar, and that's in Dayton, Tennessee. You can still go there and see that. So commonly, between 80 and 100 people crammed into a single railcar, and trains carrying 1,000 or 2,000 people. So imagine how many boxcars rolling through. So imagine how many boxcars rolling through countries of Europe. The German authorities confiscated personal belongings. Now, they had already lost many of their household goods through the Nuremberg Laws, and when they were driven into ghettos, they were allowed only to take as much as they could carry. And by the time they were put on trains, it was even less than that. And not just shoes, but their clothing, their household goods, the suitcases themselves. And this exhibit, this photograph comes from Maidanik, but if you are in Auschwitz, you see miles stacks of shoes, of clothes, of hair. This milk can is in the Holocaust Museum in Washington, beginning in 1939, in the ghetto in Warsaw. Historian Emanuel Ringelblum, and he was a professional historian before the war, decided to document everything they could about life in the ghetto. And the worse thing got, the more important it became, to document daily life: breadlines, soup kitchens, clinics, work sites, everything that they could. And the Ringelblum Archive was packed into three metal containers in late 1942, and buried in, under the rubble, in Warsaw, in the ghetto. Only two of those containers were found after the war, so the third one still remains buried somewhere in the area that had been the Warsaw ghetto. They documented everything. And only three of the people who survived the Warsaw ghetto uprising, there were only three survivors from that group. And after the war, they helped to recover the two that were found and to verify their As the war wound down, concentration camp inmates were marched from camps further east to the west, in part to preserve them as labor, in part to hide the evidence of what the Germans had done. And if you go to Auschwitz, for instance, you can see that they blew up the crematoria, and they destroyed the Treblinka camp, extermination camp, completely. And Maidanik was not destroyed, and in fact, was used by the Soviets after the war as a prison camp. So you can still see about a third of Maidanik, as it was during the war. But people knew, the citizens of Germany, of other countries, knew what was happening to the Jew. And this photograph, taken from a window in a private home, shows people being marched through Dachau, through the town, on what became known as death marches. Many people died along the way on these marches. After liberation, and we know that many among our community, many of our veterans are very familiar with liberation, and there is a small exhibit at the National Infantry Museum, thanks to our own Judge Aaron Cohen, who himself was a liberator. The American troops, as they fought their way eastward across Europe, did hear stories and did not believe them, because they were so fantastic. They were just incredible, beyond what anybody could imagine. And here is General Eisenhower inspecting the Ordnorf concentration camp. And he went there very deliberately, and he took his senior generals with them, so that he would be able to give personal evidence that these stories were not propaganda. And he made sure, he made sure that he was photographed, so that he could give this evidence. And many of the liberators were terribly scarred and suffered post-traumatic stress, not because of serving in the army and fighting in battles, but from their brief experiences as liberators. So after liberation, Jews tried to go home, they could not go home. People had taken over their homes, they were not wanted. In Poland and several other areas, there were actually new pogroms in 1946 to drive out the remaining Jews. This was an extra tragedy, and placed them in DP camps, displaced person camps, from where they were treated, and it took a while for the liberating troops, the armies, the British, the Americans, the French, to understand what kind of treatment these people needed, so that they could eventually be resettled elsewhere. And people did not speak very much in the immediate aftermath of the war. And again, this is one of the reasons that the Israeli government decided that there needed to be a specific day to commemorate the Holocaust. And I have a quote from writer Myra Goodman, who was the daughter of survivors, and she remembers that she grew up in a home where "a profound sadness and secrecy permeated our house. My parents remained silent, because the pain was too overwhelming to face, and because they'd grown accustomed to mimicking the silence of the world around them, as their families were being annihilated." There are many questions about the response of the Allies, as information about concentration camps, information about the extermination of the Jews became known. And most other governments in the world, who had several conferences in the weeks and months leading up to the war, about what to do about the Jewish refugee problem, ultimately determined that there was nothing they could do, really, or nothing that they were willing to do, to save Jews. And for many of them, they acknowledged that this was a tremendous problem, but the Jews were never a high enough priority to make something happen. And it's also true that by the time governments began to believe the reports that they were hearing, that was late 1942, and by that time, the majority of the Jews who would be murdered were already dead. People ask, why did the Allies not bomb the railways into Auschwitz, when it was known that Auschwitz and its subcamp Birkenau were a killing center? And this is a very difficult question, and people still argue about it. In the West, you might hear statements that the best strategy that the governments could come up with was to hold fast to the idea that the best way to help the Jews would be to win the war as decisively and quickly as possible. However, if you are in Poland, or Hungary, or Czechoslovakia, what was Czechoslovakia, now the Czech Republic and Slovakia, you will hear the opposite view, that if the Allies had bombed Auschwitz in 1944, when they knew what Auschwitz was, then the entire Jewish population of Hungary, 430-some thousand people, would not have been killed. And that is a very damning accusation. But the Holocaust is really fraught with incomprehensible and opposing opinions and views, because of the enormity of the event, and the difficulty in understanding exactly what was going on, and also absorbing and recognizing what Hitler and the Nazis really intended. And since then, we have seen other genocides around the world, we have seen ethnic cleansing and crimes against humanity. So people wonder, why do we need to remember the Holocaust? And we need to remember because of how one government, one totalitarian terrorizing government, targeted a particular group of people, and no one stood up, no one helped to rescue them on anything beyond individual or small group efforts. And there were many people who tried to save Jews, who helped Jews, both Jews and non-Jews, and particularly in Poland, there were networks in the resistance and so forth, but it wasn't enough. So that when we hear, since the Holocaust, since we began to really study and try to understand how it unfolded in the decades since the war ended, to look at the patterns of behavior, the patterns of policies at every level of government and community, down to individuals, to understand that when we are silent, we give permission for hate to grow; when we do not object, when we stand by and think of our own comfort, rather than the value of human lives. And in fact, when we cease to see members of a target group as being as fully human as we are, this is what allows such societies as the Nazi society to gather strength and grow. And that's not to say that we are in danger here of a totalitarian government targeting particular groups of people, but we see very dangerous signs in rhetoric and in actions, not just in the United States, but in many countries in the world today, as so-called strongmen leaders seek to be the kinds of leaders that we fought against in World War II. So that makes it so important to remember, to recognize and confront the ugly pictures and the horrible numbers, to recognize that euphemisms and tact and careful words are really not helpful. We need to be direct, we need to say, see these bodies in this picture, like General Eisenhower did, see the evidence, and look at how we got there and how this happened. So I thank you for paying attention, I thank you for listening in. It is important, and my hope is, through education, through a little more knowledge, that we can stand up against prejudice and hate in our community, in our country, all over the world, that we can have courage. If you are interested in knowing more, certainly I would send you to the website of the Holocaust Museum, but if you would like recommendations of a particular book, or film, or another resource, you can send me an email, and I will be as helpful as I can be. It is so important that we take this stand as we see it, and that we contribute to a just and healthy society wherever we are.
Thank you, Beth. That was a very powerful presentation. We have just a minute or two, and I have one question that was posed. Was there any type of family connection or possible personal experience that led you to become a student of the Holocaust?
My father fought in World War II in the infantry. And having grown up in the 60s, when information about the Holocaust first became widely available, I've known for most of my life what this was, and I heard stories from my parents about their experiences growing up in this country in the 1930s, experiences of refugees and antisemitism. No one directly in my family, however, my father-in-law was also a liberator, and he talked very little about his experiences. He was a tank gunner in the 11th Armored Division, and he was in the first tank that went through the gates at Buchenwald. And he was also posted at Mauthausen. And he told the story, and forgive me, I know I'm going a little long, but he told the story, and he didn't talk very much about it, but he did tell us the story of the day when the citizens of the town were required to go into the concentration camp to bury the bodies, the corpses. And he was billeted in the house of a woman, and when she came back at the end of the day, he asked her about her experience, and she just kind of shrugged and said, "Ah, they were just Jews." So, yeah, horrible. And so I have known survivors, and I do feel an obligation, especially having been aware of the Ringelblum Archive, that so much care was taken to document, so that we would know, that I really feel an obligation to know and bear witness.
Again, thank you so much, and I will turn it back over to Tyler, and I know anybody that might have additional questions, certainly feel free to reach out to Beth. Tyler?
Thank you, Michael. And Rabbi Schwartz, thank you for reminding us the important time in our history, the horrendous treatment that people suffered, and just the tragedy of the Holocaust, the lessons that we need to carry forward and be mindful of. Thank you for bringing this program to us. We actually are giving you a virtual standing ovation, you'll see from the comments, when you have a moment to review. This was a wonderfully impactful program to us, so thank you again for doing that.
Thank you. It's really, it's a privilege, and it's an honor as much as an obligation to be able to teach.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to remind our club that next week, we will have, as our speaker, the Director of the Columbus Botanical Garden, Stephen Bloodworth, and he's worked really hard in preparing for the SampoZium, which was to occur this spring, and has been rescheduled for September. And he is going to give us a preview of that event, and a little bit of discussion on birds of the urban landscape, so I think that you will find it interesting. So we look forward to seeing you then, and for keeping Rotary on your calendar. So thank you, and with that, we're adjourned.